And wherever it's warm, that's where I'm going, but I'm not staying there in the summer.
There were like four or five different communicating systems. Han was one of them, and our county had that. And then there's police systems, and then there's...
Well, that's a good idea.
And everybody had to communicate. You had to walk around for five gadgets hanging on your belt and figure out which ones go on.
Oh, no, no, no.
So it's nice because they're made in the universe. Everybody on the same channel. Well, in retrospect, yeah, but when you start out, you wouldn't think that. You wouldn't think it was a problem.
Right.
I now call to order the Norton City Council organizational meeting for Monday, January 7th, 2019, time 7:00 PM. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor.
Okay, sounds like it's one of our guys.
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. McLone.
Here.
Mr. Carrot.
Here.
Mr. Towesley.
Here.
Ms. Whipke.
Here.
Mr. Kernan.
Here.
Mr. Pilat.
Here.
This time, I will open the floor for nominations for President for 2019, and at this time, I would like to nominate Mr. Kernan.
Second.
Again, floor is open for nominations for President. Are there any other?
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. Carrot.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. McLone.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. Towesley.
Mr. Kernan.
Ms. Whipke.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. Kernan.
I'll take a quick minute here and change seats and plates, and we'll get back into the meeting. All right, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for Vice President of Council. And I will nominate Scott Pilat.
Second. Okay.
Are there any further nominations? Last time, any other nominations? The clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Kernan.
Mr. Pilat.
Ms. Whipke.
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. McLone.
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. Carrot.
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. Towesley.
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. Pilat.
Mr. Pilat.
All right, so we have that taken care of. Next thing on the agenda, I guess, is remarks from the President. I just want to thank everyone for your confidence. I'm sure we'll move things forward again this year. I think things are going to go well. We have a lot of things coming up, and hopefully, we can get through them all and do a good job for the residents. After this particular meeting, we will be opening up the committee work session. So at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned. All right. I now call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Monday, January 7th, 2019, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. McLone.
Here.
Mr. Carrot.
Here.
Mr. Towesley.
Here.
Ms. Whipke.
Here.
Mr. Pilat.
Here.
Mr. Kernan.
Here.
The first item under the committee work session, topics of discussion, approve the 2019 meeting schedule, which is in the second page of the packet. Any questions or corrections on that? And actually, I think that is under Mr. Towesley's committee. So, Mr. Towesley, I'll turn that over to you. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Mr. Kernan asked if there's no questions, and we don't need to vote on this or anything, do we?
I think we should go ahead and take a vote just to approve it.
Then I will make a motion to approve the 2019 meeting schedule as is.
I'll second. Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Towesley.
Yes.
Mr. Carrot.
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor.
Yes.
Mr. McLone.
Yes.
Ms. Whipke.
Yes.
Mr. Pilat.
Yes.
Mr. Kernan.
Yes. All right, and then review and approve council rules. Mr. Towesley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we do every year, we look over the rules and see if there's anything anybody on council wants to change the rules for council itself. I do not have anything myself. Does anybody else have any input on this rules?
I did not.
I do not.
Okay. Hearing none, then I will make a motion to submit council rules as is for 2019.
Second that.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Towesley.
Yes.
Mr. Carrot.
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor.
Yes.
Mr. McLone.
Yes.
Ms. Whipke.
Yes.
Mr. Pilat.
Yes.
Mr. Kernan.
Yes.
Mr. Kernan.
Yes.
Just for a point of knowledge, these rules can be changed anytime by council.
They can.
In case someone comes up with...
After tonight, it takes a two-thirds vote, but yes, they can.
Thank you.
Letter C, appointing the standing committees. Carrie, did you get a chance to type that up?
I did.
You could just pass those around, I guess.
Can we just take one and pass it down?
Thank you.
And then, I don't know that there's much beyond passing them around that we really need to discuss, unless someone has a question.
I do.
Ms. Whipke?
Why would you have me down for finance when it's normally the President and Vice President?
Well, President and Vice President are on there.
Right.
I just put you as Chair because I think you do a pretty good job at the finance things.
Oh. Okay.
So. That's a reason for that. Anything else?
I didn't know you thought about that.
Perfect.
Oh, my. All right. Any other questions? All right. Let me see. The M2 Freightliner rebid for service department, Mr. Carrot.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 001-2019. We've kind of expected, I think, from last year. And as I understand, we had a Freightliner going for bid, and I've spoken to Mr. Hess about this, who is here to elaborate, but as I understand, it's sort of limped to its destination, got a quote, which saves us around $20,000 to $22,000, and would have to be towed around because of its condition to get second and third quotes to do that. One thing that I did have a question, Mr. Hess, and because you indicated that it was having an engine problem, could have been a temporary, could have been a small thing, I don't know, but I guess at this point, since it wasn't able to just drive to the next place, is it in good enough condition? Is this the best investment to refit this? I mean, it sounded like it on the phone, but could you elaborate, please?
Sure can. The truck itself is, it's a 1999. It would be one of the ones we'd be considering replacing anyways, and the fact that it had a bed that's in good condition, we just had the frame that attaches the bed to the truck, refitted last year, and the piston that does the hydraulic work, that's all like about a year old. So it makes sense to convert this over for savings of about $20,000, $27,000. And the truck is, it's not going to be put back into the fleet. It doesn't warrant fixing a motor. It'll just probably be mothballed.
What's the level of urgency at this point to get this in use, to approve it?
Well, if the weather holds out, not a lot, but if we do get into weather, the condition of some of our trucks would, it's always good to have some new, replacing the really bad shape that some of the trucks are...
There is a sense of urgency because this is also being financed along with the truck. And the truck is being financed, is closing on January the 15th, so I really need this to be read, and one reading next week, waiving of readings, so that we can approve it next Monday, so that I can get it into that financing. So there is kind of a sense of urgency.
First, are there, is there any more discussion?
I have one real quick from Mr. Messner. You say it's getting moved in with the truck. Does that mean the original note's changing based on this?
That's correct. So it's the $77,000, Mr. Towesley, plus the 28 or 29,8, I believe, with the two extra pieces that were added by border control tonight. So it's all in one piece, a five-year lease.
Could we go over those additions, since it changed the price? Mr. Hess?
Sure.
For public's information.
The first one that we wanted to add was the, it's an air tailgate release kit. Basically, it operates tag ears that hold the bed in place so that it doesn't release, and it's operated by air. It's a better system than manual. And then the second one is just a stainless steel hydraulic reservoir and reservoir lid. And the environment that the trucks are in, it makes sense to do as much stainless as you can.
So as I understand it, as opposed to the 27,800 that we were looking at, we're going to look at 29,800 now?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Hess? Otherwise, we should then move to add this to next week's agenda. I so move that we add ordinance number 001-2019 to next Monday's agenda.
I'll second.
And we just used the three...
Just the three committee people.
I need a copy of that. Mr. Carrot.
Yes.
Mr. Pilat.
Yes.
Mr. Towesley.
Yes. You can hold on that.
All right, thank you. Then we have the contract with Legal Defenders Office of Summit County under finance. Would have been Scott or Charlotte either. Charlotte, do you want to?
Good either way, Charlotte.
Okay. This is ordinance, we're looking at ordinance two, 2019.
Yeah.
This is basically something, I think, we do it every year. It's kind of a boilerplate for, to make sure that our indigent people who get in trouble here are represented. I did, and it's going, this would expire then on December 31st, 2019. Now, does this mean that we're going to be paying $170 per case if we agree to this?
Yes.
Only if they're indigent.
Only if they're indigent, correct.
And the judge rules that they have no other means of acquiring a counsel.
Okay. And then they would pick up, this could go up to 750, but we would only be liable for the 170?
No, we could be liable for the 750 if it would go to trial. We could be on the hook for up to $750, obviously, if it goes multiple days, and it would be a lot more expensive than that, but the most we could be charged would be that 750.
Then again, like I said, this is something that we do every year to make sure that everybody has representation.
Ron, do you have a figure on that, what we spent last year?
I don't, I'm not aware that we spent anything.
Okay. I was going to say, and that's usually the case.
I think I heard in border controls, 2014 was the last time we had this, so it's been quite some time. It's before my time. I, in the past few years here, I've not paid anything.
Well, we put the contract in place every year.
Yeah, the contract was in place, but we didn't...
Yeah, it was several years ago that we've used it, since we've used it.
And that's what I thought, and I just wanted to confirm that.
We haven't had anyone that needed a legal defender?
That didn't have the funds to, yeah, that we weren't...
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's pretty good. Four years without...
For my curiosity, what fund does that come out of in the case that it's needed? And do we budget for that?
Towesley, I'll have to look because it was before my time, so I'll have to research and find out. I'm not exactly sure.
You know, if we had 10 this year, where are we coming up with finances? I'm not expecting that, but just for my curiosity.
I mean, there's a professional line item budget that I have that we could take out of, out of my budget, should we need to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This time, I make a motion to add this to next week's council agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Right, letter F, ODNR application for trails program, again in finance, Charlotte. Ms. Whipke, I'm sorry. Or Mr. Pilat, whoever.
Okay, this would be ordinance number three, 2019.
And this is just to construct or file an application asking for a grant for the construction of a walkway around Columbia Woods Park.
Do we have a cost on this? Any ideas?
We have, we broke it down into a couple. The first phase was $85,000, that's for CDBG. The second phase was, I think, $87,000 or so. I think we're looking at, plus the engineering costs, about 120 is our request.
And what of that, would we be responsible for?
I believe it's 80,20. I'll confirm that, but I think the grant's 80,20.
Yeah, didn't we put in for the CDBG last year?
We did, in October.
And did we?
We haven't heard yet on that.
Okay. So all we're doing is applying anyway?
Yep.
Of which, we need to get this done by?
February 1st, I think is the application deadline.
So we need to put a rush on this?
If we could, yes.
So this is an application for the same thing we applied for last year for the trail?
No, we have not made application through the ODNR trail grant.
I thought it was discussed.
We applied for Nation Works, and we applied for CDBG.
Oh, okay.
And we applied for Tuscoree Park.
But this is for the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else? This time, I make a motion to add this to council's next agenda for next week, looking to waive readings and have emergency language.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Letter G, Ciblone?
Oh, my. Excuse me. This is ordinance number four, 2019. This is what we've already, haven't we already done this once, and now we're having to revise it because there was an increase? Is that the way I'm understanding this?
There was a 9% increase.
9.3% increase over what was the engineer's estimate. One thing I think council should be aware now, that due to the cost of the right-of-way acquisition, we have no more money in the fund. So every cost now is passed off to us at 100%.
So anything that we have to take over from this point forward is going to come out of our pocket?
Any change orders in the project that require an increased cost will be passed on to us because the amount of money that was budgeted through the AMHats, a lot of it was eaten up in right-of-way acquisition.
But didn't they agree to that? Maybe I'm not following this correctly, but I thought that everything that we had done so far, that they were good with putting out all that money, to the point to where now they brought us to here, to where there's nothing left and it's all going to be on us?
Well, they had enough for the estimate, which was the construction estimate. The bid came in at 9.3 over the cost, and Ron can verify, I think. We went back and forth asking them to reject the bid. They would not reject the bid because state law is 10%. Anything over 10%, it must be rebid. And I'll just leave it there. I asked for it to be rebid. And then that's when they came back with, you guys have to pay the overage because we had the 80,20 based on the current project, but with the increased cost, now it's passed off to the city, which I think equates to about 300, right around 300, 400,000, somewhere in that number.
So we're going to increase it by 400 in order to make sure we can cover the project and hope that we don't have to go to mitigation or to the courts anymore? And this is going to be for Phase Three?
Two and three.
Two and three?
Two and three. And I'll just tell you that we are evaluating internally what we can do in what we call a non-performance, meaning we wouldn't do those, there's a retaining wall, which is a very expensive piece of this project. There's some things we're trying to non-perform to save us significant dollars so as maybe we don't need this full allotment. I've asked Josh from GB, GPD to do that for us. So we're trying to evaluate ways to bring the cost down, but because the bid was this, we have to make sure that we have that much money available in order for the project to proceed.
Robert, Phase One, was there very many changes?
Very few, to my knowledge, yes.
It what boils down to is, we really don't have a lot of choice if we're going to get this stat.
Unfortunately, that's correct.
Do we have any recourse even after we move forward, pay the money out, whatever needs to be paid? Is there any recourse on our side where we can go back and try to collect some of these funds?
We reviewed all the funds for this project, safety grants, et cetera. We have tapped out all the grant money, which is why... You just brought up an idea.
So possibly something?
I just thought of a grant that we might be able to apply for, for some of the money to get paid back during the construction. But it wouldn't be that much, but I think if it's $20,000, it's worth $20,000 at this point. But, but yeah, we'll make sure that we evaluate our options at this point.
Does this $400,000 now for certain cover the rest of the project?
As it's bid currently.
As it's bid.
Without change order, yes.
So if we, if we don't approve any change order, who has to approve the change order?
So it goes to ODOT.
First.
The inspector. The ODOT inspector then concurs with our engineer. Our engineer says, okay, say the contractor, Carvo, happens to say that it's $5,000. Our engineer says, no, it's a $2,000 item. We would, based on the contract, would pay the $2,000 based on that amount. All those change orders have to be approved prior, and ultimately, council would have to approve those change orders because it's an increase of the cost.
This wouldn't include having to acquire anybody else's property for like the frontage or anything?
No, this is strictly for construction.
Okay. Isn't Carville the one that's doing the bridge?
That's...
Kenmore Construction.
Carvo did Phase One.
Okay.
That was my next question, was the acquisitions. How many more acquisitions do we have to make?
I think we're in six.
And are they expensive?
I think we're under six. The issue we have with the current acquisitions, they're all temporary easements. They're all temporary takes. Temporary takes are not, it's hard to explain. We're only using them during the period of construction. The statute's not really clear on the cost for a temporary take, as it is a permanent take, and that's one of the issues we're having. People are assuming that because it's a temporary take, they want permanent remedy. Well, if it's a permanent remedy, then the property would become ours, but that's not the case. We're only borrow, essentially, we're borrowing it for construction.
Like for parking?
For parking or construction. I mean, that's really materials.
We have to return it to its original state or...
Correct.
So then, so then we actually have no more acquisitions to do only...
Temporary, the temporary easements, yes. Yes.
So it shouldn't be a great deal of more funding involved in the acquisitions themselves?
We are significantly apart on one parcel. And by significantly, I mean in the mid-five-digit numbers.
The temporary?
Temporary. All these are temporary.
I have a question. You said, Mr. Fowler, that you weren't able to reject the bid. Is that because of the state?
Yes, the state would not reject the bids. That's correct. Again, this is an ODOT let project, and I promise you, rest assured, as long as I'm sitting here, we will not do an ODOT let project as long as I'm here. We're going to bring it all in-house because then we control the bidding. We could choose a different bidder for any reasons. The statute's lowest and best, and best is our determination, and I'll just leave it at that.
Was there an explanation as to why the estimate was so far off? That seems like a pretty big number.
There are a couple of concerns. Number one, the maintaining of the traffic in the center of the city is a big issue for them, you know, because they're going to do construction, and there's some serious concerns of what they might get into there. That's what Josh had indicated to me. He feels that there's a lot of unknowns with that center part of town, which he feels strongly is probably the primary driver of increasing the cost. Now, just so, I just think I should be clear that the estimate for the sewer was $900,000. It came in right at the bid. We're still trying to figure out exactly. We think the retaining wall in front of the bank, or the old bank near Acme, is one of the more expensive items, and if I can non-perform that, that'll do a lot to save us money.
Are we talking about the bank that's no longer there?
Correct, the bank that's not existing.
So why do we need a retaining?
Well, because if we put the sidewalk and other things in, we still have, I mean, we're evaluating what we can do there to reduce our cost.
So again, from my understanding, this, the legislation we passed a month or so ago, this is adding on to that. That was 2.7, I think.
Correct, it's another $400,000. It is, it is the 9.3% over the bid price that we have to cover.
So this is replacing that legislation, then?
Yes.
I know that there...
So that's still a 10-year term, is what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I know that the state, I don't know about the state, but some contracts especially have, do have a 10% plus or minus 10% difference in bidding before they can, you know, before you can rebid. My only question would be, it's awful coincidental, in my mind, that they came up 90... that they came up nine point three percent increase in their bid to keep it under ten percent, is my statement. And I'm not accusing anyone of anything other than a bad bid practice. They originally bid a project at X number of dollars, and they were awarded that bid based on those figures.
No, this is the original award. Just understand, this is the original award. Their bid, their original bid was nine point three percent over the estimate of the engineer.
Oh, okay.
And I don't disagree with some of the thing you, something you said there. And part of my frustration is that nine point three number is very suspicious to me. And that's why I asked for it to rebid, because there were a couple of companies that did not bid that I thought could have made, they're already doing work in the city, that could have had an opportunity to do more. And we were told that the low bidder, Carvo, ODOT, was going to award the bid to them.
Aren't we looking at them at doing a couple of other roads in Norton or not?
I would say no.
Okay. Aren't they, aren't they, don't they have to work under a timeframe that they have to have things done by such amount of time?
Yes, but if you recall, one of my big concerns, and I had just started here, is on phase one, they did an initial like base layer, and then they left for like forty-five days. And there were some mailboxes that didn't get put in. There were a lot of things that were left untidy. And they disappeared for about forty-five days. And then, oh my goodness, nine thirty was when it was the completion date. So they came back like nine fifteen and hurried it up and finished everything and left it for about forty-five days with barrels and other... And that's one of my biggest concerns. We can't have the center of town like that. And it's one of the reasons I really wanted it rebid, is I have concerns with their performance in this city in the past.
What is their per-day cost for lack of compliance with the date?
Yeah, but see, you're missing something, though, the date itself, their deadline of their contract.
They get done by the deadline.
They had so much time.
No, I understand on that project.
Rather than complete the project and then leave, they were able to leave, work on other projects elsewhere in other communities, still came back, completed the project.
On time.
On time. So they didn't, in essence, go over. They just had, there was some...
Same thing that's going on with the bridge right now.
I understood that. What I'm asking about is this phase that we're kicking, ready to enter into. Do we have a per-day cost if they overrun those dates?
I will confirm with ODOT. I don't know what their completion schedule is. I know it's 2020, which is my whole other issue. We're a whole nother year away. But I will follow up with ODOT and get a construction schedule. We have a construction meeting later this week. And once I get that schedule, I'll be able to pass it along.
Due to the fact that they are going to be in the center of town and they are going to take longer, there's no doubt about it. There's going to be, I can understand why it would take longer. But if we, if I would assume that there is a completion date, a set completion date, June first of 2020 or whatever, and I'd like to know if there is, like on most contracts, if they don't complete it by June sixth or whatever the date is, is it enough per day to pay us back for some of those inconveniences?
But they'll finish on time. That's the problem. They'll leave for like two months, and then it'll be torn up, and then they'll come back and finish on time.
And there's nothing we can do about that?
There's nothing we can do because the schedule says June first, they're...
Then put them under the microscope, anything and everything. You have that, the engineer that's inspecting that down there, and if they've got a tack in the wrong place, nail them.
I know. That's my concern. My concern is the timing of this project.
Now, that meeting that you were referring to taking place, the construction meeting?
Pre-construction meeting, yes.
Are you a party to that? And if so, or if not, can you be invited and bring your concerns of the center of town from a safety and welfare for the residents? As far as that being down any length of time or not being completed in a timely manner?
Yeah, we will be present at that meeting.
This isn't the same company that ODOT had issues with last year, is it?
It is.
And we're still dealing with them, and they're not tightening the reins on them at all? And is there anything that we can do to make their lives miserable?
It's not, like I said, they're doing the same thing on the bridge, a different company. It's not unusual for construction companies to do that. They'll start a project, and then they'll have other projects that they need to get busy on. So they go ahead and they just leave that project knowing they have plenty of time to get it completed by the deadline date.
I can understand that. What I don't like is the fact they've raised the price on us, and now we're sitting here at the point that it's coming out of our pocket when it should not have. And the fact that they've already had issues, and the fact that they put us out on other things. So if there's anything that we can do...
We'll watch the contract and...
Give them back, then we should do it.
With the added $400,000 approximately, what percentage, total percentage, does that leave us with, Ron, as the city paying for the entire project? If you add $400,000 to it, we originally were paying, what, twenty percent? Or ten?
Well, some of it was twenty-ten, some was ninety-ten, and some was eighty-twenty, depending on engineering, design, and construction itself.
So what part of that $400,000 is eighty-twenty or ninety-ten?
It's eighty-twenty.
It's eighty-twenty. So if you add the original contract total percentages, we're still only paying in addition to the four hundred... I mean, if you add the $400,000, we're coming up more than twenty percent, I'm certain, for the entire project. Because if it originally was eighty-twenty, and we're adding $400,000 that we cover on our own out of 9.4 million or whatever it was, I believe... We're not talking eighty-twenty anymore. We're ninety-ten. We're talking some other...
I think it's sixty-forty, just rough ballpark number.
Sixty-five, maybe, sixty-five, thirty-five, which doesn't make that project look nearly as good, but it's still pretty beneficial to the city to get the state to pay for sixty or sixty-five percent of a brand-new road, sidewalks, infrastructure.
Traffic signals. I mean, there are a lot of improvements to the project. It's a well-worthwhile project.
So hopefully, you can look at it in that manner. Even though it's $400,000 more, it's still a heck of a lot less than what it would be if we didn't have those.
Is there, are we looking at some kind of timeframe on this?
Yes, we actually are up against the award date, and they will not award the contract with us. We need to, we need to commit the funding for the project to move forward.
So we need to waive and have emergency language?
Unfortunately, yes.
Any other questions?
Ms. Whipke, I have now actually two questions for Mr. Markey. And maybe this is for Mr. Fowler as well. If this council fails us, do we just lose the funding period?
The other alternative is we pay cash. And we would, I don't recommend it because this is a big project. It's going to take two years. But we would have to front that cash immediately, which means we would pay $400,000 in cash out of our allotted budget. That is an option. We felt this was a better option because it's a two-year project. And...
I think Mr. Towsley's question was, what if we didn't pay? What if we didn't approve this extra $400,000?
We don't want to approve it. What happens?
Right, yeah.
There's some risk in that, right? This goes back to the why I wanted it rebid. And the concern from ODOT's perspective is if we want it rebid, now they know that that number's nine point three percent higher. So every other bid's going to start at the nine point three higher, and they're going to... So essentially, it's going to cost you more money.
Would likely be minimal at best.
Yes, correct.
And they're still going to have a ten percent leeway, even if they started at nine point three percent higher.
And that was ODOT's point.
Wouldn't make much sense to do what...
And we're definitely only looking at this nine point three. And they're not going to, next year, we're not going to be sitting here saying nine point three again, are we?
No.
And my one more question for Mr. Markey. Mr. Markey, we, again in the fall, we passed an ordinance for two point seven something. And if we pass this, is it necessary to rescind that other one? In other words, are we going to have two pieces of legislation?
We will have two pieces of legislation now. We can go the rescission route. We can go the repeal. We could amend the original ordinance. I thought it was just easier to do a second ordinance. But if you want to do either of those other options, rescind, repeal, or amend, I'm good with that as well, as whatever council wants to do.
I personally would like to, for my own clarification, I'd like to see the old one gone.
Get rid of it and bring this one out again.
I can add some language to the end of this ordinance of repealing the prior one. It'll be fine.
Thank you.
And then this one just be a total.
So what we would need to do is make a motion to repeal the old ordinance and then bring up the...
You could just put the language right in this ordinance here, so when we pass it, the original one's automatically repealed.
Anybody else? Okay, at this time I make the motion to add ordinance number zero four, 2019, to next week's council meeting with the stipulation that it has the repeal of the original ordinance so that we can reflect this increase, looking to waive readings and emergency language.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. All right. Unfinished business, ordinance one oh five, 2018. That would be in finance, so...
Oh, my. You disliked me tonight, didn't you?
Welcome to my world.
This is back to the CRA question that I'd asked about so many times that we had got put off because of the school not signing the paper. I'm guessing they've signed.
They have now signed. That's correct.
I've gotten around to it. So now that they've done that, now we can move forward with this. So it means we'd have to untable it?
Yes.
Okay. I, since the schools passed that, the income taxes opposed to property taxes, does that have any effect upon this?
No, I mean, as they lower their property taxes, as the income tax comes, gets phased in, it will be less of an impact on them because there's abated property taxes, but they're relying less on property taxes. But this has no impact on them one way or the other.
So that's not going to affect, that's not going to affect anything that the city does on anything future with the businesses or anything due to that changeover?
Schools actually lowering the property tax, that one particular levy will be lowered one year ahead of time, as before the income tax even starts, the way I understand it. So the people who are going to have to pay that income tax for the schools will actually be paying it, will have a rebate sort of, you know, elimination of a certain section of their property tax for a year before the income tax starts coming out. So they won't be paying them both at the same time.
No, I don't think so. I don't agree.
Well, that's what they say.
Well, my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is, right now, we're starting to, we have to fill out the deductions for our monies to go in.
That's true.
So the only thing is that we're starting to pay, but the school will not, they won't see that money. They won't utilize that money until 2020.
That's what I said, Mayor. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I did. What I'm saying is, the school, the school will not realize a double payment. They're only going to get the income tax money, even though we're starting to pay it right now. They won't see that income tax money until the property tax money has been eliminated for that year.
Right, in 2020, right. But I think when you said it, you said it a little bit...
Okay, maybe I did. But what I'm saying is, the question to do with the income tax and the property tax lowering, and Charlotte and I discussed this today or yesterday. There is a general perception out there that, oh my God, we're paying property tax, even though it's being eliminated, we're paying it at the same time we're paying this income tax. And the schools are going to get that plus the income tax. They're not.
Right.
But to my knowledge, no levy has been rescinded. So you're going to pay that levy until it's off the books.
It's, well, my understanding is it has been rescinded. Or it's in the process of being, through the county, of being rescinded. That was part of, that was on the actual ballot, that that would be rescinded. That one point, what was it, 1.7%?
Yeah, we should, we should probably just, instead of speculating, we should probably just look at the language and see how it's...
We're speculating, but I already looked at my tax bill. It did go down, so it's happening.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It happened. I checked my tax bill. It went down.
A couple hundred bucks.
About a hundred, yeah.
Whatever. It's already...
It happened, so it's going to happen.
And I know this has nothing to do with us at the schools, but since people have asked me, and I really didn't pay that large of attention to the school issues, does that mean there's still going to be some property taxes left? They didn't all go away?
Yeah, yeah, they have.
Only one levy is going away, and it's minimal.
So they're still going to collect property tax and income tax?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, with that said, does anybody else have anything on one oh five, 2018?
I noticed there was some discussion back and forth there. Was it or was it not approved by the school?
The resolution was passed. What Mr. Fowler's wanted me to clarify was that they haven't signed the actual agreement yet, but the resolution... The agreement has been approved, which allows us to move forward.
And the resolution number and everything, we have that?
Yes, we have the signed resolution.
Oh, we're doing it at this point anyways, untable it. Going to put it on the agenda to bring it back to life. We're not going to, we can't sign it until they actually do anyway, correct?
Right, so the way it works is, when we go to submit the application for the property abatement, that application packet includes the CRA agreement, the agreement you're approving here, the ordinance, the ordinance that created the district, the area, and then they want the school district compensation agreement in that.
Exhibits A, B, and C.
Yeah, that all has to be included. So there will be no abatement until we provide them all that information.
Correct.
So that's really the mechanics here, but they have approved it by resolution.
Is the exact amount that the schools will be receiving per annum going to be included in that?
It's a formula. I mean, so their funding can fluctuate over time just because their property tax rates can go up and down.
That doesn't really affect us.
Right.
Well, I guess I'm going to make a motion to untable ordinance one oh five, 2018, and add it to the agenda for next week. Would that work?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further unfinished business to come before council?
I could... I don't know if it's unfinished or new, but I wanted to know, like I asked you all a while ago about the sign at Acme, if somebody come up, got any kind of ideas yet for putting notices on that sign, what they would be, when they're going up? Has anybody discussed it with Acme as to when we're going to be in, putting our message on that board? I would suggest to start coming up with a list of maybe, like I said, little league information or maybe updates on the road while it's going on, the road progress, because it's up high enough and it's right on the road to people see it easier. But just some ideas for that sign, since we do have usage of the sign. Then, Mr. Hesp was here. I was going to ask him. I'd like to get a look at the inside of the old fire station on Johnson Road. Like to schedule some kind of an appointment with him or somebody. Go in, look it over, and see what's there, what it's being used for.
That's the park's garage. Vern Tenney uses that for all the park equipment.
Yeah, I've heard that. I just wondered, what's in there? Is it...
Mowers, trucks, trailers.
I'd like to see the inside of it. I know it's not a problem. And also, I'd asked here several months ago about, we're going to have in the spring, we're going to be doing Johnson Road, is that correct? Okay, well, next year after that, then. When is it?
We did not secure the funding, so we did not move forward with Johnson Road, so...
I thought we were redoing it under the county thing or something, where they didn't do it correctly, and they had to redo it? No?
No.
Okay. So did anybody check on the mines then, as I asked? Under Johnson Road, before anything was ever planned again? Under, under Johnson Road before anything was ever planned again for Johnson Road? If we never get the funding, it won't matter, I'm sure.
I didn't, I didn't pursue anything because right now we're not doing anything with Johnson Road. In 19, there won't be anything and-
So it wouldn't hurt anything to have that information ahead of time though, correct? I'd like to know if there's mines under there before we sink a lot of money into Johnson Road. Okay. Also Mako Drive, how long has it been, Mayor, since you've been down Mako Drive?
A little while.
Uh huh, I think you know what I'm getting at. Mako Drive is no longer Mako Drive, it's Mako Mountain. It's, it's, it's not even discussable. It's terrible. And it's nice that they, we felt good enough about it to run a decent road down to the church. But after that, anybody that's coming off of the other end, the north end of it, it needs attention, let's put it that way. It's, it's dangerous to drive on it, it's so bumpy and there's dead deers laying on the side of the road. There's dead opossum, there's a dead pig. There's all kinds of nice accumulation along the sides of the road that I'm sure are there because people think it's a dump, so they just go down there and dump things. Some of the neighbors have complained about the odor to me and, and also the bumpy roads. Because some of them, as I was told, the city knows that some of them come out that way and go to Wadsworth to work. And so it's sort of been neglected for some reason or the other. I don't know why, but I'd like to-
Been neglected because of water problem. If we want to sink $600,000 into a road that's seldom used by our residents, I think our priorities are elsewhere, which is why we've chosen to do other projects.
Do the, does it, is it $600,000 to chip and seal that section of that road?
You're going to chip and seal it on garbage, it's going to fail, that's the problem. You have to re-dig it up and start over.
So what do we do, close it?
Full depth larcimation or vacate it.
Do we close it, vacate it? Do we do nothing about the water problem? Do we not put in irrigation drains?
We put several, several thousand dollars into it in pavement last year. Larry's trying to do the best he can with the situation.
Wait, I'm sorry, Robert, you put in several thousand dollars last year on-
Asphalt.
You mean the patching, the little patches that they put in?
Yeah, asphalt's expensive.
Several thousand dollars.
I know it's hard to believe, Mr. Gainer, but Larry does a pretty good job here. And he did a good job out there. And it doesn't last because of the roads in deplorable condition.
I'm not saying he doesn't do a good job. I'm not saying anybody doesn't do a good job. All I'm saying is the road is in terrible condition and something needs to be done about it. If it means closing the damn thing, close it, period. It's ridiculous. Drive down it sometime and you'll see what I mean.
Drove down it last week.
Well, then you know what I'm talking about. I shouldn't have to raise my voice and be stupid about it. Something needs to be done about it. And if that means closing it, I would suggest that the police department close it because it's not in condition to drive on. That's good, I'm finished there. Also, I'd like to have somewhere or another, I'd like to have a map of the sewers and water lines in the city that's existing and, and proposed, that you can read.
Mr. Fowler, could they not make that section of Mako just a gravel road? I mean, it'd be better than the potholes and everything else. I mean, if they just ground it and basically put gravel in until such time that we can come up with a better solution?
I know Larry's been evaluating the options out there and none of which are good, that's why.
Robert's correct about the water problem. There is a terrible water problem there because there's a swamp on one side and almost a swamp on the other side and it's, it's in terrible, I know, it's in a terrible place. But, you know, those things have been let go for 30 years.
And then also, Mr. Fowler, you and I spoke last week there regarding, did the schools ever give us any information? People are having a hard time coming up with, who are they supposed to tell their HR people to contact to take the half percent out? Who's the go-to? Doesn't go to the city, but doesn't go to-
So the email I received regarding the tax collections, go-to, all questions should be directed to the Norton City Schools Treasurer Office. That being said, all taxes run through the Higher Department of Taxation. Nothing comes through the school district or the city. Please direct any questions to Stephanie Hagenbush, she would be happy to assist.
Any further unfinished business? Any new business?
Not sure if this qualifies. I just want to open a, at least some discussion an hour later. But I've had several complaints over the past year that have involved things that are, fall into property maintenance and I've had some conversations with Mr. Bremen. And it's not a subject that I think is a help, enjoyable subject for most of us. But it's something I think that is overdue since our maintenance codes are well below the standards of the state and we need to take a look at some of these. Painful or not, I think we need to at least consider some of the changes to bring us up to at least state standards.
Any other new business?
More just a question, are Amber Alerts tied into our new sign in the center of the city? Do we know if there's a way that those could be?
No, the sign is self-programmed and it's not-
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's not self-programmed, we have to physically program it.
Any further new business? Okay, topics for the next work session, I think we're going to be talking about amendment of section 408, 04, parking violations and fines. So we'll be talking about that. Anything further? Were there any public comments? No? All right.
No.
No? Okay, all right. No public comments? In that case, motion to adjourn?
Some ooft.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.